...of applications for participation in this program. And essentially, what's going to happen this evening is, by way of structure, I'm going to ask that each representative for the various applications, please come forward and just explain the application very briefly, one to two minutes, as to what your intention is. And after that, I'll ask for public comment on that application, and then we'll move through the various applications, one by one, in that fashion. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven applications. So we should be able to move through this in the half an hour allotted that we have. If we need more time, we run over, we're happy to push back our town council meeting. Then, this evening at council, there will not be a decision made during the public hearing, it's simply for public input. At council this evening, the council will vote on the applications. And once council votes on the applications, then those programs will be ripe for consideration by the state grant. All right? Any questions about the process or procedure this evening? All right, so we'll move right into it. The first application that we have is from EDC, and that's the Monroe Performance Pavilion. Is there anybody here that's going to present regarding that project? Okay, we'll table that one for the time being. Number two on the list is the Monroe Playground Foundation. Sir, if you'd come forward, state your name and address for the record. Just keep in mind, we do have the application in front of us, so you don't have to be as detailed as you may think you need to be. Thank you.
My name is Dan Keen, 122 Swenson Drive. Our application is for raising funds for, you know, building the playground. I can be, I can be pretty brief, I think. We want to build the playground at Wolf Park, and we believe that this assistance fund will, will be able to help us do that.
Great. Any questions from members of council?
We talked to Mr. Keen.
Not too long ago. Not too long ago. Again, it's a public hearing, so I apologize for having to repeat yourself.
No, not, I'm happy to.
If anyone walked in and hasn't, hasn't heard about it. Mr. Keller.
I just wanted to just ask for the record, I don't think it would be an issue, because of the level of funding they're requesting, it would require a post-project review, which would require a cost for accounting. In fact, I assume that you'd be willing, as part of the fundraising effort, to cover the cost of that.
Yeah, we'd set that aside.
Set that aside. Based on your anticipated completion date, I put September 15th as the date that that would be necessary, should this stay approved.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. So regarding this application, would any members of the public like to participate or comment at this time relative to this application? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next one. That's the Monroe Food Pantry. So if someone from the Food Pantry would like to come forward and give us a brief presentation. Ms. Jaeger, just for finality, name and address for the record, please. Or position.
You want my position, my address, my office?
Name, name and, name and position.
That's okay. Barbara Jaeger, Director of Community Services.
Her address is this building.
Right.
Perfect.
I also live in Monroe, if you need my Monroe address.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. I have two. The first one, I guess, is the Monroe Food Pantry.
Good.
And it's a continuation of the programs we already have in place, we're just asking for an extra $20,000 to increase the amount of fresh produce, vegetables, and eggs, cheese, and healthy snacks.
Good.
We do give those out, but they're limited numbers, we'd like to be able to give a lot more.
Thank you, Ms. Jaeger. Questions or comments from council for Ms. Jaeger? All right, seeing none. Thank you. Comments from the public regarding this application? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next application, is Project Warmth. Ms. Jaeger, you're on.
Okay, same existing program, except the added funding will allow us to give more oil in the wintertime. Right now, we give 100 gallons. This would equate to the averages that we normally have, 250 gallons, and $500 for a non-heat utility. So make more of an impact to our households in Monroe.
Questions for Ms. Jaeger relative to this program from council? Seeing none, any comments from the public regarding this application? All right, seeing none, thank you, Ms. Jaeger. Ms. Jaeger?
Thank you.
Moving on to the next application, is the Conservation and Water Resources Commission, the Pollinator Garden.
Karen Burnaska, 99 Bagburn Road, I chair the Monroe Conservation and Water Resources Commission. Hello, okay. Karen Burnaska. B-U-R-N-A-S-K-A, 99 Bagburn Road.
Isn't it nice to finally meet someone in town that doesn't know who you are or where you live?
It's great. Yeah, I don't have to go. Anyway, I, I am joined here this evening with two members of the Conservation Commission, Barbara Thomas, who is a master gardener, and Cynthia Jean Casper, who's a horticulturist, so we're happy. And I would also like you to know that this project is a joint project with the Conservation Commission, the Parks and Rec Department, and also the Monroe Land Trust and Tree Conservancy. I'll give you a little more brief. When, when we talk about pollinators, people think of birds and butterflies, if they think of anything. But it's really bats, birds, insects, and whatnot. And if it weren't for these pollinators, we would not have flowers in our yard, we wouldn't eat those wonderful vegetables, and many, many, many other things. So what we are asking for funding to increase the diversity and the number of plants and shrubs at the Pollinator Garden at Great Hollow. We would like to be able to put up signs, explanatory signs. We would like to have informational and educational material and develop it that we can use in the schools and with civic groups. And we would also like to have this as a showcase for native plants. Because if it weren't, these pollinators are around us all the time, and if we nurture, and if we protect the land, we protect the places where they, the pollinators breed, where they feed, where they live, it's, it helps all of us. It helps the pla, all the plants that we see and we depend on for whatnot. So we thank you. If you have any specific plant questions, the experts are here. And I also, I do have a comment, though. I do hope you support our application and all of the other worthwhile projects that are being presented this evening.
Thank you very much. I guess my first question is, it sounds like a wonderful project, is $2,000 enough?
They're going to say.
And the only reason why I ask is because, you know, the nature of the program is, we're looking at corporate donors who would receive a direct tax benefit through the state for participating, so.
The reason that.
My thought is maybe if.
Enhance it some?
Yes.
Well, the reason that we, we have only the $2,000 is it's a multi-year program.
Okay.
And the work is being done primarily by volunteers.
Okay.
And we would love more plants. We would love to be able to put more signs, we would love to do this, but it's volunteers who are doing the work. So you'll see maybe, if, if we get this, you'll see us back next year.
Are you going to talk about the June 24th also?
I was, we were going, and Cynthia and they have come. If, if you'd like to see what's been done to date, and what we hope to do in the future, the grand opening is Sunday, June 24th, at 1:00 PM, and we have invitations. Do you have them? Shall we give them to you, ma'am, the clerk, or should we? Or should we give them to?
Because every time you send me the minutes, I always, you know, mention about the garden.
So we hope you'll come, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should have asked, any questions for Ms. Burnaska from council?
She answered.
Comments from the public relative to this application? Seeing none, we will move on to the next application. Thank you. The next is the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library Sensory Storytime.
Hi. My name is Lorna Ryans, and I'm at the library. Sensory Storytime is an interactive reading program that's designed for children with special needs, including, but not limited to, those on the autism spectrum. This program, we have held before in the past, last year, and it was previously funded by the Weller Foundation, but the money for that program has now run out.
Questions? Ms. Jaeger?
Yeah. If you don't get the money, will you still have the program?
We do not have, it serves a very limited number of children.
Okay.
But they are extremely underserved in the community. So because of the few, you know, the small number of children that it serves, we can't afford to provide programs like this at the library on our current programming budget.
What are the ages of the children it serves?
You have to forgive me, because the age is three to, preschool to sixth grade.
Okay.
Does it need that once a week, or?
They meet once a week, have to, this is actually a children's program, but the children's librarian couldn't be here, so it is 16 sessions, two sessions per month, for eight months during the school year.
Can I, can I ask, what's the deadline for your receipt of the funding, in order to make a determination as to whether it's going to happen or not?
Well, Michelle didn't say that, but generally speaking, you know, if we're going to set up a pro, program, it would have to be at least, you know, three months ahead of time.
Okay, when's it set to commence?
She wants to do January through December of 2019.
One more question?
Yes.
Is it something you could work, if, say if you weren't to get this, is it something you could work with the Board of Ed, maybe, to have them work with you, to?
I guess that would be a possibility, but.
Because it kind of helps them?
Well, I know that the person that she has hired in the past to do this is, you know, somebody who's professional, that was recommended to her. I, I don't know, that's possibly something we could do.
Just curious, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from council? All right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public relative to this application? Okay, we'll move on to the next application, which is our last application on the list, that's EMS Stop the Bleed Program. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Ryan Condon, Nine Stillridge. So I'm here representing Monroe EMS. The Stop the Bleed Program is kind of a new idea, it has come out since recent events of mass shootings, where studies have now shown that the victims of these shootings don't necessarily die from the initial gunshot, but the time it takes for first responders to get to them, they end up bleeding out. Pretty simple. What this class is designed to do is educate the public, who tend to actually be the true first responders, because they're the ones standing next to the victim at the time. And this allows them, basically, to learn the basic techniques of controlling the bleeding to prevent more casualties. It's basically run like a CPR class, if anyone has taken any of those. And the kind of cool benefit we have is being EMS members in town, in order to be certified as a stop the bleed instructor, all you have to do is be an EMT and take the class. And currently now, Monroe EMS volunteers, we have about 25 people that have taken the class and are qualified to be instructors. So what we would really like is funding to basically, the class more or less can be presented for free, minus some need for instructional materials. But really, what we would like is, when giving this class to the public, offering it to Monroe for free, is to be able to then give each member, or a person that's taken the class, a tourniquet, to either keep in their car, keep on them, have, know how to use. It is a little scary, but it is something that, you know, is becoming more and more real. So that's basically it.
Good.
Can I ask why it costs $24,000?
So tourniquets are, the actual military-grade tourniquets that we use are about 60 bucks, 70 bucks. And again, we didn't want to, you know, put out one class for 25 people, we wanted to figure out how to offer this to the town as best as we can. And I believe I was asking for.
About $24,000.
Eight hundred.
Yeah, about 800 units, so we figured if we could offer the class, over the course of the year, to about, you know, roughly 800 people, that would be a good start.
Thank you.
To take, in order to take the class, you don't have to have any prior medical.
Nope. It's, it's just, it's just like CPR. You come in, you learn the basics, it's really, there's, it's one of the, one of the things that this class is, that they're rolling out with. Some of it, they even teach the stuff that, as an EMT on an ambulance, you actually can't do. But it's just becoming more and more apparent that it's a different type of medicine that's happening. It's almost, it's basically battlefield medicine. I mean, this is just how you do, and it's not just something that's good to roll out because of the, the potential of one of these incidents. It can be used when you're driving down the road, and you're a Good Samaritan, somebody gets into a motor vehicle accident, or, you know, your next door neighbor's mowing his lawn or chopping wood, and he slips, and, you know, you're there before we get there. So it's just, it would make the community the safer place, basically.
Is there, similar to CPR, is there a certification that come, that you receive along with taking the class?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's basically just kind of a, it's, it's along, like a first aid, or something along those lines. And right now, it's, it's, again, it's kind of a new program, the study came out from the, I want to say the Hartford Consensus, is the study that did it. And there is a website right now, where they sell the material, and, yeah, it's, it's something that is, more and more towns are using it. Recently, we know now even some municipalities in the area have their police force actually now starting to carry tourniquets also, as just another kind of first line of defense for this.
Are there any liability concerns with either coming back to the EMS, to the town, or even just on the person?
No, it's, so I understand that, you know, and that's one thing that, back when the EMT classes, a couple of years ago, used to be the tourniquets weren't even happening. It was something that they had stopped doing, they were concerned, but the science shows any potential loss of a limb, that wasn't originally kind of the factor there, it's, you know, you can have a tourniquet on for up to, anything up to two hours will prevent that, will, that, that's not a concern. And again, this is basically for the, you know, 911s on its way, stopping, controlling the bleeding, and as morbid as it can be sometimes, it really comes down to, are you going to live, or are you going to, you know, potentially lose a limb? Same with CPR, one of the big things is, people don't realize, is if you're doing CPR right, you're breaking ribs. That tends to be what happens. And, and it's, do you want broken ribs, or do you want to, you know, go home at the end of the day? So that's kind of what it becomes.
Ms. Jaeger?
If you, if you were not to get this money, would you consider having the classes and charging people for the tourniquet, like that would be the price of the class?
That's, that's definitely a very, very la, I mean, we're working, this is one avenue we're working, where we've talked to charitable organizations in town that wouldn't be able to donate under this specific thing, to get funding from them also. I mean, we want to fund this, we don't want to charge the town and people to do it, because, you know, that's going to deter people. They're not going to want to, sometimes, you know, oh, it's a free class, let's take it, it's, you know, I have to pay for that, eh. So we really would love to just roll this out as, you know, for the town of Monroe, done by the Monroe EMTs, to really kind of educate the public.
Can I ask?
Sure, please.
Do you know, other towns around us, do they do this?
There are, off the top of my head, I don't know which towns, but I do know some of the surrounding towns have already rolled out Stop the Bleed programs. This is becoming a more prevalent class that really is getting out there. I'm sorry, I don't have that info off the top of my head.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought I started a debate.
Name for the record?
Trumbull in Easton, I know her too. There are other communities in Fairfield County that have also started to do the program for the public. In fact, they came out, it was last month, I believe, they actually did a national Stop the Bleed Weekend, to try to promote this throughout the United States, just not our area, because they found, as, I missed the beginning, so I apologize if I repeat anyway. But as we, as we go through, as we have more and more of these, and we know, because we have one next town over, they've done studies and studies. And, and what Ryan got to was what they called the Hartford Consensus, was one of the big studies that was done after Sandy Hook. And a lot of recommendations came out of that study. And one of the things they found was, those people that did not die instantaneous, there was a good number of people that could have survived, or potentially could have survived the incident, had somebody been able to do some bleeding control initially. Because they found the people were bleeding out, because it takes time. The current practice, if we go back even to Columbine, the current practice was, law enforcement's grounded the school, we waited, eventually SWAT went in and resolved the issue. Well, we found in law enforcement, we can't do that anymore, because it took too much time. So law enforcement adapted. Over time, now, the other emergency services, both EMS and fire, have got to adapt the way we do things, because we've got to get in quicker. So they studied it. One of the things they came out with was, we all consider first responders like the police department, fire department, EMS. And in reality, first responders of these type of incidents are citizens. It's those people next to somebody that's shot, that's hurt, and as Ryan said, even, you know, you're cutting wood, if you chop your leg, it's somebody that's there, is the actual first responder, and can make a difference if somebody lives or dies. And through the program, which is about a two-hour program, it teaches the basics, how to use a tourniquet. And like Ryan said, it used to be, tourniquets are bad. Well, through studies and military studies, tourniquets are no longer bad, tourniquets are good. They save lives. And you can have a tourniquet on now, and I forget the exact number, but well over eight hours or more, without any deficit to the limb in the long term. Whereas we used to teach, if you put it on, it's going to, you're going to lose the limb. Studies found it's not the case. So it's important for us to start getting that out to the community, and as we said, it's like CPR. How do we save lives if somebody goes into cardiac arrest? It's the person next to the person that goes into cardiac arrest, starting CPR. Because if you wait for the first responders, minutes go by. Same premise, somebody with severe bleed due to trauma, whether it's accidental, whether it's intentional, such as the, the mass shooting, or some sort of mass attack bombing, it's those people right next to you, and they saw that in Las Vegas. It was the people there at the concert, providing some care and first aid, that helped people survive, at least until then, the official emergency responders showed up and could provide definitive care. So it's, it's a broad concept that now we're trying to roll out. As other towns have done it, we're trying to now do that. We've got now instructors on board, so we can start hopefully next month, scheduling classes, which we will do. And we want it to be free for the public, because that way we can get people in, and hopefully get a broad audience to come and take the class. And then, you know, the thought of being able to give everybody a tourniquet when they leave, no cost, and they've got that tool, they can carry in their car, at home. So God forbid something happens, they know not only what to do, they have an instrument and a tool to be able to do it. So we feel it's a worthwhile program, that we are going to roll out, but this assistance would help us then do a better job at that, give the public the tools they, they can use to help somebody. So I don't know, we answer all the questions for that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Martin?
One more question, that, hard question to ask, because those are hard conversations to have. Is there, along with taking this course, a, if you do become certified, if you do go through the course, is there a duty to act?
I'm going to say no, in the sense of, in reality, even EMS do not have a duty to act off-duty. Now, we do, I mean, if I'm on the way home after leaving here, or something happens, yes, I'm expected to stop, but there's officially no duty to act that, so if I continue to drive, there's no liability on me to do that, unless I'm wearing a uniform and somebody looks and says, well, wait a minute, there it is. But no, there's no duty to act. This would be just something that gives you some skills to help. And I also throw, like CPR, this could be a family member. This could be somebody in your house that gets a severe injury that's bleeding out, that you could assist until, you know, EMS, police get there.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Dan, can you give your, your two roles, you keep, tell me from EMS to police, can you state for the record your current titles?
Oh, so, yes, chief of EMS here in Monroe for, I've lost track of how many years now. Law enforcement for 28 years, currently a captain with the Fairfield Police Department. And I'll throw that out, too, we actually, the boxes are now sitting in my office. We bought a tourniquet, and actually a holder for each duty gun belt, for every officer in the department. And the same purpose being, the quicker they can self-help. In fact, you know, when we teach this program, I'm an instructor, what we call tactical emergency casualty care, that's directed toward first responders, law enforcement, EMS, and we actually put them through scenarios, you know, screaming, yelling, low light and stuff. But one of it is self-application of tourniquets. So we're giving a tourniquet to every officer to carry on their belt, so that they can use it either for a victim, or if they were to get shot or hit, they can put it on themselves, and you have them practice that as well. So it is across all disciplines where we're looking at this. It's not just EMS, the public, it's law enforcement, it's fire department as well. We've had some preliminary discussions with the other fire chiefs, on how we can work together if we ever had a mass incident.
Thank you very much.
Just real quick, is there any chance that this technique could be incorporated into a first aid or CPR class?
It's probably not going to be as part of a CPR, because Heart Association and Red Cross, who do the CPR programs, have their own first aid-type program. For, if you take a first aid class, they do, or they should be teaching you how to do a tourniquet in that class. This goes into a little bit more depth, because, you know, the skills that you get taught in those two hours are the tourniquet application, as well as some standard Stop the Bleed, direct pressure, and then wound packing is another part of it, that they normally don't do in the first aid classes. But these techniques that are part of this program are a national program, that have been, you know, vetted by a bunch of different agencies, to put the program together that's being rolled out to the public.
Good. Thank you very much. Comments from the public regarding this application? All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. EDC, Mr. Keller, any comments?
Yes, I was attempting here to, it seems like we're not going to have an EDC rep available this evening, so I will speak very quickly to this application that was submitted by the chairman of our EDC commission. As you may know, some time ago, the Economic Development Commission, with the prior first selectmen, had worked on this concept and project. I know you've got the project on your agenda tonight, to talk in more detail, however, they wanted to take the opportunity to submit an NAA application as well for their, for their project. There is a typo on page two of five, in the neighborhood area to be served. There was obviously some, some creative borrowing from another application that they were using, so the word playground should be replaced with performance pavilion. Other than that, the goal, as you know, and we'll discuss later tonight, is to have a permanent structure at, at the park, to replace the, the concept, which is currently a rented stage that has to be brought in and take down, taken down every year. There is some data that suggests very strongly that having a strong connection to the arts and to cultural activities can significantly increase local types of kind of micro-tourism, and enhance the economic viability of the community by increasing traffic there, and increasing the, how, particularly in the retail sector, how things go. So it's something that the EDC is very much apply to have some of the NAA funds be available towards their effort. This would also require a post-project review, and would the cost of accounting for that would have to be borne out of the, out of those funds?
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions, comments from council? Regarding this project? Public comments? All right, excuse me. So we have heard all seven of the applications. I'll just ask one more time, before we wrap up the public hearing, for any comments regarding any of the applications that were presented this evening? All right, seeing none, any further input or discussion by and amongst any council members? All right, seeing none, just to remind everybody, before we close the public hearing, that these applications are on our agenda this evening for consideration by council, and the new business, and so we will consider each of the applications this evening. I do anticipate voting on each and every one of them this evening, and, and hopefully, with council support, submit these as viable projects for consideration for this state funding. So I want to thank everybody for coming to the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, it's 8:04 PM. We'll take a brief two-minute recess, and then we will commence the regular council meeting.
Are you here this morning?
Is it?
Tea, how early?
Yeah.
Nine, ten will be you?
Yeah, I'm applying for the tournament, so I'm enjoying it.
Nine o'clock, ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock's fine. Yeah, well, ten.
Ten o'clock, Thursday?
Thursday's better, I can't do Friday.
Okay. The Thursday's here because it's great.
What? You're quilting clothes?
Yeah, right. She's, I think she's, hi Jason, she's, I hope you just, I take it out for the Washington City Quilts. You know Steve Shapiro died.
I was just going to tell you.
No, I, Laurie Shapiro called me last yesterday morning. Massa heart attack, seven years old.
Were they in Florida or in Carolina?
No, they moved to North Carolina to be by their kids. It was adults. He got up, he got up from events, I didn't feel well and then dropped there. So he's being buried in Virginia.
He should have stayed up here.
Well, he wants to be with the kids.
Yeah.
You guys ready to start?
Sure.
All right, would you all please rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, today is Monday, June 11th, 2018. It is 8:11 PM. Meeting's starting a little late this evening due to the public hearing that ran over prior regarding the Neighborhood Assistance Act. We're going to move right on into roll call. Mr. Reed is absent this evening, he had a medical procedure and he wanted to participate by telephone. I just don't think the acoustics are sufficient in here to have him do so, so I advised him that, thanking him for his participation. He did participate in LNA by telephone, which is a much smaller setting, but I don't think it would work here, so maybe an extra in our budget, we can fix that. But, so Mr. Reed is absent, all our members of council are present. Our consent calendar, are there any comments or objections to the consent calendar? Mr. Ma.
Mr. Chairman, not to the minutes that are in this calendar, however, in looking back over our minutes to find something in the past, I did notice that the March 26 meeting minutes were not on the website, so I just ask that that be addressed.
So you have no objections?
No objection to the current consent calendar. Just seemed to be the appropriate place to raise it.
March 26. March 26, is it?
March 26.
March 26. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ma. Seeing no objections to the consent calendar, we have communications A through U, and thankfully I don't have to read all of those, so I ask that those be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting. Now comes public participation. Would any members of the public wish to participate in public participation? Mr. Hostler, if you can forward, name and address for the record, please.
Lee Hostler, 272 Stanley Road. I just would like to mention the fact that one of our extinguished, excuse me, distinguished members has passed away, Steve Shapiro. I don't know if everybody knew about it or not, but I just thought I'd bring it up. Sometimes things get passed over, but anyway, thank you.
Passed away Saturday night from a Massa heart attack.
Would any other members of the public wish to participate? Name and address for the record, please.
Steve Kirsch, 35, Applegate Lane. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In, this is really to the first selectmen, in your comments at the last council meeting, you talked about another round of bad weather. I was wondering if tonight, in your, as you're making your comments, you can address what, if any, progress has been made on the post-mortem from the earlier storm? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kersh. Any other members of the public wish to participate in this public participation session? All right, seeing none, I'll close, public participation. Mr. Or.
If I might ask everyone to join us for a moment of silence for Mr. Shapiro, who was a fixture here in the gallery, week after week with lots of pointed and direct and informative questions and always with a healthy dose of humor to make the evening go by a little bit better.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Or. We have three appointments this evening. We'll start with appointment A, Keith Romano to Inland Wetlands. Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Keith Romano, 37 Sleepy Hollow Drive, to the Inland Wetlands Commission for a term ending 2/24/19.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, seconded by Ms. Lepalas. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Keith Romano has a background in excavation and commercial real estate that has brought him in front of various boards of commissions in surrounding towns. Mr. Romano would like to help shape the town he lives in and has a skill set that suits him for this position. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Megan Hay.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to appointment B, it's Mr. Chris Davis to the Board of Health. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chris Davis of 215 Fan Hill Road to the Board of Health for a term ending 4/27/21.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, seconded by Ms. Lepalas. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Chris Davis is looking to get more involved with the town he lives in. He can't think of a better commission to serve other than the Board of Health. Mr. Davis knows that the best way to help his community is to ensure the health of his residents. He is willing to work hard in a position and is eager to learn. He has helped various volunteer positions within scouting and other youth programs. Mr. Davis is a man who will show up and get things done. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Nicole Lito.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. And the third appointment this evening is Michael Hurley to the Board of Health. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Hurley, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Hurley, 10 Johnson Place, the Board of Health, for a term ending 4/27/21.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, seconded by Ms. Lepalas. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Michael Hurley has a background in personal training, along with owning his own carpet cleaning company. He would like to get more involved in the town, he believes his professional experience can only benefit the health department.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will, Mr. Ma, didn't you have something?
I did not.
Okay.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Nicole Lito.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. We have no further appointments. Onto action items, A is the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met since last council.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Moving on to B is Plan Zoning Public Works and Parks Recreation. Ms. Lepalas?
Yes, the three that I just want to mention are exactly where was said two weeks ago, but now they've gone through public hearings and they've been approved. So, for example, 50 Cambridge Drive, which is Axle Plastics, has now been approved with the modification proposed material, exterior storage, three exterior overflow tanks, and then 485 Pepper Street, which is industrial District One, they've been approved, they have a, they have a draft approval for next meeting with conditions, bringing the property into compliance with the I-3 district requirements. And lastly, the industrial District Three, which had all the business about the storage tanks, the 60-foot high storage tanks, that's now, their public hearing has been closed and they're waiting for approval. Actually, they have been approved, the last thing, but that's it, that's it for me.
Moving on.
I didn't have anything to talk about.
You didn't? May I say something? I attended their meeting Monday night. They did a walkthrough of the park, which was interesting. First of all, we got dry on Little Cushman's, but went to the lake and, you know, the different areas, the parking lot that they're working on, supposedly working on, that kind of stuff. They had a working dinner meeting, and perhaps I, I'm guessing, and I will ask the chair, I'll hold the question until we get to the TPA thing because they had some concerns about that, so.
Okay, yes, I just didn't get those notes to check about. Thank you.
Moving on to, actually, MC is the Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. I'll stand in for Mr. Reed on this. The subcommittee didn't meet this evening. It discussed a number of contracts, all which you'll find on our agenda this evening. That was the Charter Spectrum Fiber Optic Network Services Agreement, was the only of those agreements that LNA did not act on because there was a request for a little bit more information on that agreement, so LNA did not think it was ready for action this evening, and so that will appear on our next agenda. And just to forewarn, everybody will not take any action on new business items C this evening. The other agreements were all vetted by LNA and either appear in a new business around the consent calendar or approved, all of them were approved unanimously three to zero for consideration. Moving on to item D, strategic planning. Mr. Coman?
We have not met since our last meeting.
Okay, EMS building, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we did meet last week. The applications for the RFP for the building were out. We had approximately 10 companies receive them. From there, we had a meeting for the questions that we received in regards to those. We did have one company ask approximately 22 questions, I believe, in regards to that, which we did answer. So we do have a meeting again tomorrow night to review that, and we'll move forward possibly in the next, the meeting following with our selections. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item at these Fire Services, Mr. Coman?
Fire Services, for the study that's being done, they should be back in town this week, meeting with the fire chiefs.
Great. Last but not least, Mr. Kellogg's first selectmen's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple items. First, we seem to have a string of bad luck at Great Hollow Lake, so the septic repairs were finished only to find out that some water well booster pumps are now failing and not maintaining sufficient water pressure. So Parks and Rec is working very aggressively with a vendor on a timeline to get those repairs fixed so that we can actually have bathrooms working. We continue to provide alternatives at Great Hollow Lake, albeit of a porta potty variety, but it's better than nothing at this point. The second item was just to let council know that working with information technology and Tanya Bombero, my assistant, we have finalized a new process for being able to notify the community of various community events that are going through town. I'm modeling this off of a process that I know is apparent, works very well with the Board of Education. So we'll have, there's ability for anyone to sign up for a mailing list off the website, community events mailing list, and then organizations for nonprofits and community groups can submit also through the website their events, and those will be distributed through that list and also posted on the town website. We now have a new community events list right adjacent to the official town meetings list. So that is live as of today. We actually had it in kind of a beta mode for a while, it is now live and out there. And then just to answer the comment that was made, or question in public participation, we actually had some meetings scheduled with EverSource that were canceled because of the most recent storm. It was supposed to be the day after, there was actually a very large meeting at EverSource where we're going to be, among other things, discussing that. So at this point, I have actually just worked recently to schedule a new meeting in a couple of weeks, and I'm not, at this point, I'm going to basically tell EverSource, this is where we're having a meeting, you need to be there. So it is scheduled for the 25th. So that's the update there.
Comment I'd like to make, and I think the community event announcement's a wonderful idea, I would just caution your office to make sure there's a good vetting procedure. I know, knowing you, that you will follow that because in this day and age of so much information, sometimes it gets watered down, and I think that happens a little bit at the Board of Ed's side, so I would just, that's my, my one comment as to, you know, what constitutes a community event and what doesn't.
I don't disagree with you. I actually had a conversation about that, and in my mind, it's got a, if it's not a law- And in my mind, it's got a, if it's not a local, when we're supporting a local nonprofit or community organization, it's not going to get my approval. It's, you know, there are some times where clearly something is, my office has been asked to promote events that are clearly commercial in nature and we can't be in that business for obvious reasons. So, you know, we'll continue to keep an eye on it.
Okay. Wonderful to hear. Ms. Agler?
Mr. Kelleb, would you be able to give us, I know I spoke to you personally about this, but maybe for everybody, an update on the Rotary?
My favorite, my favorite topic. So, so the state's definition of open is a little bit different than mine. So...
Yours isn't fire?
Obviously, is, I guess you would call it functional in that it is somewhat of a circle. But it's a little bit, a little bit rough. There have been many, many conversations that I, I and I've had others, Scott Schott's line, who has very close relationship with the project engineers from DOT, has had several meetings. And late last week, we were having additional phone calls about that. Also had our police department involved as well because there were some incidents I was made aware of late last week, just in terms of the confusion that some drivers were having there. So, based upon that, they did come down and they did try to make the dirt portion a little bit less bumpy than it was. They actually, we had them come back this weekend and do some more work. There was a period of time that they were out there putting more dirt and rolling it. The, they installed the ropes that went through the barrels because the concern that I was hearing is that there were so many barrels, no one could tell where the lanes really were because if you're not, it was really, it was a little, a little bit hard to follow for some people. So, they did put the ropes through the barrels. They made the lanes that were being created by the barriers wider, so it was easier for particularly truck traffic. So, they did, we pushed them to do everything they possibly could do for this weekend. I was told that it was, that the paving of the northbound side should be done this week, maybe as early as tomorrow. So, I'm hopeful, once that paving is done and the line striping, it would come right after that, it will be much more easier to navigate. There obviously will still be a lot of work there in terms of, you know, there's landscaping, there's walls, there's the bell tower, all that still needs to be worked on. So, there will obviously be ongoing work for a while, but at least, at least the traffic pattern will be a little bit more, hopefully a little bit more intuitive once they pave it and get the line striping done and all that science.
Can I ask who's paying for all the police? Are we at Monroe or state paying?
State.
All state.
Well, it's actually, that project's actually an eighty percent federal, twenty percent state project.
Because they had me going up today and it was on the wrong side of the road. I was so scared. And they kept on pointing to me, you know, I'm going, I'm not moving till they tell me exactly which direction. I went up the wrong side because they told me to, but it was scary. Not going on it again for a year.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg.
I can't avoid it.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. Chalk Hill is still there and it's not going anywhere, but I don't believe it's fairly stable at this particular time. Unless anybody wants to comment on it, and I'll have any updates or comments on Chalk Hill. Okay, moving on to our new business. A is the project concept review for the Monroe Performance Pavilion. It would obviously be a natural progression to have this vote by council first, that council's endorsing this project before we vote on the application for the neighborhood assistance. So, that's why that appears first. So, I don't believe we have anybody from EDC still here this evening. So, unfortunately for you, Mr. Kellogg, it's going to fall on your lap.
That's fine.
Something to do.
I think in a text from Mrs. Radisco with her regrets due to her schedule, unable to make it here this evening. But she did submit this project concept review on behalf of the Economic Development Commission. I think you're all familiar with this, somewhat familiar with this project. But it started to get a life of its own, if you will, prior to this process being implemented. But because of the nature of this project and the significance of the project, the party is appropriate to have it come through council with this process before additional funds were released. EDC feels strongly that, as I said earlier, that a project like this that can foster cultural vitality can help the local economy as well. So, it is in that spirit that they are taking the lead. They do have a strong partnership with the Monroe Arts Council that is also one to be involved. But again, it's the EDC that wants to take the lead in this. There has been, as I said, some fundraising that already began. They have raised approximately, there's approximately seven thousand dollars that's already, I'm sorry, no, that's a different, seven thousand is the cost of the thing. Would be, I didn't write it down here. There are some funds that have already been received and I don't have that number in front of me. But it was in the ballpark of a few thousand dollars.
Thirty-seven.
I'm sorry, I lost my train.
Thirty-seven, four and seven.
Well, anyway, regardless, there is, there are funds that have been set aside. That was around three or four thousand. Here it is, three thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars. Seven donations that were received. The, as you can see, the costs at this point are very wide estimates. This is simply a concept still, obviously. There are some drawings, pictures that she has provided based upon some other venues that are similar in terms of what the structure would look like. But obviously, it's not intended to be an identical. This is exactly where it will be. That's something that needs to be further vetted and further quoted. But this would include, you know, a foundation, the stage, and the leg. And currently, Parks and Rec has to rent the stage that comes in and comes out every year. It certainly is something that can continue to be done, but it doesn't allow it to be there year-round, doesn't allow us to have an ongoing presence there and allows to put the level of opportunities that could potentially be, potentially be put there. There is a small reduction in, in cost savings as a result of that. So, the EDC has said that they would spearhead a hundred percent fundraising for this project. And as you know, they did also apply for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program to be able to allow for some tax breaks for corporations that may wish to contribute. I'll do the math. The departmental comments are there as expected. There's certainly a lot of additional vetting in terms of specifics from Parks and Rec and planning and zoning, even this council would have to approve such as eight twenty fours. But again, this being a conceptual review process, I felt there was sufficient information and sufficient desire from the community to continue fundraising that this council should at least entertain at this point and decide whether or not we want to get behind it. So, that's my, that's my overview at this point.
Mr. Kelleb, a few questions. The, the overview, the second paragraph, it reads a little, a little rough. It's Monroe Arts and Culture Council. The concept originated by the Monroe Arts and Culture Council and Donna Radisco, who was appointed as the president MAC by the prior first electman. I mean, that first sentence, I know it's probably missing some words. Ms. Radisco, was she the president of MAC or was she, what was her role?
My understanding is at some point in time, she was the president of Monroe Arts Council. I don't, that is a separate nonprofit and, you know, it's not a town agency, so I can't, I can't speak to that. There's a separate five oh one C three, but I don't believe that is currently her role.
Because the way it reads, it says, Ms. Radisco, who was appointed as the president MAC by the prior first electmen. So, my question is, I don't believe Mr. Vabrick had any authority over that commission, correct?
As far as I know, unless he had some other role in that organization that I'm not aware of, I would agree with it.
To your knowledge, that's not a town appointment by any means.
To my knowledge, it is not. To my knowledge, Monroe Arts Council is a separate five oh one C three, not, not an agency.
Thank you. And then, down in Funding Source, the first line, the EDC will fundraise to cover the cost to design, build, and develop the pavilion. Do we know how EDC proposes to conduct this fundraising?
My understanding and my, again, you know, without Donna here, my understanding, my conversations with her is that she was, that the whole EDC was looking to do a range of fundraising that would range from kind of, you know, a, you know, kind of grassroots fundraising all the way up through, you know, you know, large, you know, large giving, you know, philanthropy, those kind of efforts where they seek to identify larger contributions from individuals or corporations, that kind of thing.
All right. Do we know what the design cost is for this project?
I don't have any of those. I mean, again, it'd only be a conceptual at this stage, I have...
No estimates.
No estimate. This is a ballpark for the entire project at this point.
And then, the, just to acknowledge the prior fundraising, thirty-five hundred or so dollars. How was that fundraising put out to the public? How was it marketed and what type of, do we know anything about that fundraising? I don't remember that fundraising coming through council previously or being approved by council.
My understanding was that a donation was presented to EDC at one of the summer concert series by Mr. Vabrick. But I am not, I would have to ask finance and Ms. Radisco what the source of those funds were. I'm sorry, what?
I remember that evening, I believe it was proceeds from the golf tournament.
Oh, that could be. That could be very, that certainly could be.
It was the first selectman's golf tournament. Have you heard to that?
I am.
Okay.
And it was presented to two EDC members all evening on stage.
With a specific purpose for the pavilion?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, it was in the paper.
It was during the, last year's production of Spemla. It was presented, it was funds from the first selectman's golf tournament presented to the, I believe it was actually presented to EDC as well as the Monroe, as well as to MAC for the purposes of the fundraising for the performance pavilion.
It's, well, it's referenced, it finances, finances establishing here that it's part of the donation fund. But I just want to make sure the record's clear because all of this happened prior to an endorsement by council. And so, I just want to make sure it's all tied together with as much information as we have. Yes, Mr. Mallor?
Have, again, I know this is going to be hard for you, Mr. Selectman, considering this isn't your proposal. But do we know if there's been any talk or any plan as to the maintenance of this pavilion and how the cost of the maintenance of the pavilion would be taken care of?
Those would also have to be further evaluated. But I would presume, you know, that there'd be, you know, relatively, I mean, that would be part of, you know, you would, you look at your construction based upon, you know, a low, you know, you want to build something that's going to be low maintenance, obviously. But I don't, at this point, I would not have those level of details, no.
Ms. Martin?
Although Park and Rec, the commission, and the Department of Planning and Zoning seem to give gracious support to the project, particularly in the planning and zoning administrators' response. There's a lot of things that they say will have to go process, proceeds, processes that have to be gone through in order to get to any idea of completion. Who would, who would shepherd that through the process? The EDC commission? Is, is town involved?
Ultimately, it would be a town application, just like any other town project. Anytime there's a town project, whether it's sidewalks or the shed at Wolf Park that we recently approved, that's now a table of that. I end up, you know, submitting on behalf of the town and then the town agencies would shepherd it through the system.
So, do?
It's a town making an application to its own planning and zoning.
Mr. Mallor?
Just also one thing that I've been noticing on the first page. And then, when it's giving the affiliations, it is the Town Board or Commission of EDC. But then, MACC is actually listed as a other unaffiliated volunteer group and not as an established five oh one C three.
I, you know, I believe that check mark is misplaced. This application first came through as a, with, with both organizations identifying and I had said which one is, which one is actually running this and it was EDC. So, I think they just forgot to remove that checkbox. But I would agree that it should be, it would be a nonpro, I mean, MACC would be a non, I mean, if it's the Monroe Arts Council, that's clear.
If they haven't established five oh one C three status.
Some IRS website is a charitable organization.
Okay. But do you see not here, how much more question do you have?
Do we have enough information on this tonight?
That was actually my point, Mr. Chairman, is would we want to table this until Mrs. Radisco is here? Because truthfully, I wouldn't, I, I would not, there's not enough information. I would actually ask her to have more cost information. If we're going to fundraise, like the previous applicants have given us a cost, you know, how much does a stage cost? How much does?
Well, I expected someone here this evening from EDC, so I can't speak to this.
I know.
And if she needs more than two weeks, make it to the July meeting. She needs more than the two weeks till the next meeting, the next council meeting, June, whatever. Make it till the July meeting.
Mr. Mallor?
One question.
Motion to table this matter until the next council meeting so as to attain more information from EDC on the project, as well as have an EDC representative present.
Second. Motion by Mr. Mallor, second by Mr. Rooney. Before we begin a discussion on the actual motion, I just want to have Mr. Condon have the opportunity to speak. So, if you could couch your comments within the discussion of our motion, that'd be...
I would. Does that jeopardize the submission of this from a timing standpoint? To have the, I mean, to have this, is there a time limit?
Well, I can answer, I can answer the question, though I think procedurally, we should not be voting on the application for a Neighborhood Assistance Act program application without having the endorsement in advance. But I can endorse it this evening. We shouldn't be voting on that aspect of the grant program.
Agreed.
Just want to make sure we're clear on that.
So, to answer your question, yes, that would put that at risk because I believe we have till July first and the next meeting is the twenty-fifth. Things happen, submitting things to the state, I can't, I mean, obviously, I would do everything in my office to get it submitted in a very expeditious manner should the council approve it. But I can't speak to what may or may not happen with the state with, you know, we're talking about the last week of, you know, down the wire, so to speak.
The only concern I have, I, it's a concern that's in line with, it seems like everybody else's concern. The concern I have is this is somewhat of an odd project. It's the town raising money for the town for a specific purpose. And then, you know, sitting out here at council, we have so many various projects that we've considered over the years. And in fact, all you have to do is sit at a capital project budget meeting to talk about, well, we could fundraise for this, we could fundraise for that. So, it's just, and the fact that this has already undergone some round of fundraising and it's been put out there as a town project, I just think we need to be very careful as to what the process is or processes we are going to go through and how we're going to put this out there to the public so that everybody's well aware of what they're potentially donating to or for. So, I think that's a plausible motion. And for the discussion on the motion? All right, so I'll call for a vote on the motion to table. All those in favor? All right. And against, that motion carries eight to zero. So, Mr. Kellogg, I just ask if you could, on behalf of council, just please send that message to EDC verbatim as to what Mr. Mallor said. I think that, he said it well. New business, Item B are the various Neighborhood Assistance Act program applications. We will skip A, which is the EDC Monroe Performance Pavilion and take no action on that application and move on to B, which is the Monroe Playground Foundation. And Ms. Lepelis?
I will introduce a resolution and make for its adoption. Resolve that the Monroe Town Council, the legislative body of the town of Monroe, approves the submission of the Monroe Playground Foundation. the submission of the Monroe Playground Foundation application for the two thousand eighteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
Motion by Mr. Lepalas is our second. Second by Mr. Condon. Um, any form of discussion or, uh, relative to this application? Mr. Mauer?
Uh, just in the, uh, as we've seen throughout the process, this, uh, organi-, this organization, this committee seems to be very much in, uh, very much organized and have a, and what I feel is a very, not only a very proper purpose for this, but also a very proper, uh, properly filled out and properly detailed application, so, uh, I, I see no reason why this council shouldn't pass this.
I would agree.
Uh, I would agree as to all of the submissions this evening, actually, the EDC ones, so I don't want to have to repeat it myself every single time, but I think all of them were wonderful, uh, very good, very good submissions and, uh, very well presented, so I would support all of them this evening.
I agree with that decision.
Me too.
Uh, anybody else? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. C, Monroe Food Pantry, Mr. Lepalas?
I will introduce a resolution and move for its adoption. Resolve that the Monroe Town Council, the legislative body of the town of Monroe, approves the submission of the Monroe Food Pantry application for the two thousand eighteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
Uh, motion by Ms. Lepalas is our second, and second by Mr. Rooney. Madam Clerk, if you would incorporate all of our wonderful comments about the, uh, Monroe Playground Foundation into the pantry, I'd appreciate it. Any further discussion? You don't have to do that, I'm kidding. Uh, second was Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion specific to this application? Seeing none, I'll call for all those in favor. Uh, and against, that's eight to zero. Uh, D, Project Warm, Ms. Lepalas?
I will introduce a resolution and move for its adoption. Resolve that the Monroe Town Council, the legislative body of the town of Monroe, approves the submission of the Conservation and Water Resources Commission Pollinator Garden Educational and Environmental Benefits Program application for the two thousand eighteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance.
That was Project Warm for that motion.
Uh, really? Where is it? I don't even, that one, oh, it's always at the bottom. All right, so let me do it again.
Yeah, just restate the motion.
Okay, resolve that the Monroe Town Council, the legislative body of the town of Monroe, approves the submission of the Project Warmth application for the two thousand eighteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Program.
Very good. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Condon. Uh, any further discussion specific to this application? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. E is Conservation and Water Resources Pollinator Garden.
I will introduce a resolution and move for its adoption. Resolve that the Monroe Town Council, the legislative body of the town of Monroe, approves the submission of the Conservation and Water Resources Commission Pollinator Garden Educational and Environmental Benefits Program application for the two thousand eighteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin. Any further specific discussion? Mr. Mauer?
Uh, I just want to thank this committee for their presentation, uh, and, uh, on the record of this meeting, also state about the grand opening on the twenty, June twenty-fourth at one P.M. For those members of the public that would want to go, I think that's, uh, this is a great program, as I was saying with other, with the other matters, but I do just want that on the record for the town council meeting as well.
Any further discussion?
In, in part of the Park and Rec tour, they stopped and showed us the, the area. It's really interesting to see, and, and looks beautiful there.
That's what I'd mentioned a couple months ago when Mrs. Baneska first told me about it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. Uh, the next is the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library Sensory Storytime.
I will introduce the resolution and move for its adoption. Resolve that the Monroe Town Council, the legislative body of the town of Monroe, approves the submission of the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library Sensory Storytime application for the two thousand eighteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
And motion by Ms. Lepalas is our second. Second by Mr. Mauer. Any further specific discussion at all to this application? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Uh, and against, the motion carries eight to zero. Uh, the last is the MS Stop the Bleed Program. Mr. Lepalas?
I will introduce a resolution and move for its adoption. Resolve that the Monroe Town Council, the legislative body of the town of Monroe, approves the submission of the Monroe Food Pantry application for the two thousand eighteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
And motion by Ms. Lepalas is our second. Second by Mr. Condon. Uh, any further discussion relative to this program? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. That concludes our, uh, two thousand eighteen Neighborhood Assistance Act program application, so congratulations to all those applicants, and, uh, thank you, members of council, for your participation in that. Moving on to, uh, item C, just as a reminder, that's the Charter Spectrum Fiber Optic Network Services Agreement Amendment. Um, it, it was not actuated by LNA, so I'd ask, um, this council for their patience in, uh, considering that matter our next meeting, although it is on the agenda, so it is open for discussion, should anybody want to comment. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, D, which is our first of the SNE Building Systems Maintenance Services Agreements. Uh, D is relative to the Police Department. Mr. Lepalas?
Yep. I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolution regarding SNE Building Systems Maintenance Service Agreement for the Police Department. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the maintenance service agreement and any associated documents by and between SNE Building Systems for the Police Department.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Uh, for discussion, uh, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Kelly, just for a, uh, a brief introduction, and before I do that, I'll just, uh, again, for the record, educate that LNA did review this, uh, agreement and did approve it for consideration by council through this. Mr. Clough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, the, this and the, uh, agenda item following are two, uh, annual maintenance service agreements that, uh, apparently have been in place since the police renovation and the building of the library. Uh, the, so this first one before you is the Monroe Police Department. The, this is a company that, um, we have a proprietary system in both buildings by SNE. It is the automated control system for the, uh, HVAC and related, uh, components. Uh, there's a rather detailed table at the back that kind of indicates some of the various services, many of which are, um, have to do with the operating system, database, et cetera, but there's also some, uh, some functions relative to servicing and maintenance. Um, so these are annual, uh, service agreements, and again, it's a proprietary system, uh, so, you know, the, uh, there aren't a whole lot of other options that wouldn't be extremely costly. I will note that on page four, item two, repair services, uh, there is a, a missing check in the last of the three checkboxes. Our selection there would be to please advise me of the cost of the park, verbal and written approval is required. Uh, other than that, our town attorney reviewed it, and, uh, I believe it's ripe for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion?
Have one.
Yes, Mr. Condon?
Just a question, since we replaced the AC unit in the Police Department last year, I didn't see this amended to include that. It may be automatically included, but it wasn't specifically put out. We took one off, took one off the IT closet?
That project is still, uh, that was the, uh, there was a grant, is that referring to? That, they're still, uh, looking through that. I'm not, that is a separate, I think that probably would be, uh, included in the system because it's in their server room, so, I mean, it would still, it would still be part of the system, I mean, if it was-
Right.
If it is now, it's going to be-
Could be one off, one off, so I just want to make sure it's included.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. Uh, item E is the same type of agreement, uh, but relates to the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library. Ms. Lepalas?
Yep. I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolution regarding SNE Building Systems Maintenance Service for the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the maintenance service agreement and any associated documents by and between SNE Building Systems for the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library.
Thank you, Ms. Lepalas. Uh, motion by, uh, resolution by Ms. Lepalas is our second. Okay, buddy, Mr. Rooney, thank you, uh, for discussion. We won't make Mr. Kelly repeat himself, it's the same agreement, but, uh, this one's related to the library. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. The last item on our agenda this evening is the, uh, TPA Design Group Contract Amendment. Mr. Lepalas?
I will introduce the fin-, resolution entitled, uh, the, this resolution regarding TPA Design Group Contract Amendment Wolf Park Multipurpose Fields and East Parking Lot Lighting and move for its approval. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the TPA Design Group Proposal and Amendment to the original agreement for services for the Wolf Park Multipurpose Fields Project and the East Parking Lot Lighting.
Motion, uh, by way of resolution by Ms. Lepalas is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Uh, for discussion purposes, we'll turn this over to, uh, Mr. Kelly, but again, uh, we agree, Count LNA did, uh, review this agreement and did approve it three to zero for consideration by council. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, you may recall, this project coming up several, uh, months ago, there was, as you know, the field projects go back to, the, the original agreement goes back to two thousand thirteen, uh, for this company for the various services in regards to these fields. Um, and as you know, this, the, the field's been a project that this council and various other boards and commissions have already approved several years ago. The agreement that was before, uh, council some, uh, some time ago had to do for another amendment of the TPA agreement to be additional work, uh, primarily to get the final bid documents out for the fields, uh, and some other relating work. Uh, at that time, uh, we identified serious concerns related to that agreement in terms of the scope of services and what appeared to be possibly duplication of some of the costs that were, that should have been included in the original contract that we were being asked to pay for again. Um, there was a lot of complexity in regards to this, uh, after getting, uh, various staff around this, uh, we also, uh, identified, uh, through the help of our town engineer, Mr. Schatzlein, who, uh, isn't able to view us tonight, but did significant work to evaluate some of the engineering agreements, uh, along with, at the time, Mr. Hooper, who was still here. We then had a transition, uh, to Ms., Ms. Oroz, and, uh, who's, who's kind of taking this on at this point. They did a lot of work, uh, with Parks and Rec, with our, uh, town engineer, and with our town attorney, uh, obviously keeping me involved as well, but they did a lot of the work behind the scenes to wrestle this to the ground. Um, the long story short is we now have a new agreement that accomplishes what we need to get these bid documents out without, uh, paying for work that we've already, uh, should, should have received already. Um, they do have significant information, I mean, there, there is significant investment in this at this point, that it would be foolish to not continue with this group to proceed and get it through the, uh, through the goal, so to speak. Um, there are some incremental services that we do need to do that were not part of the original agreement. Um, those have been whittled down considerably. Uh, however, at the same time, the town engineer identified that there's additional work required for electrical engineering of the overflow lot, which that work is part of the planning and zoning's, uh, conditions of approval for this, uh, for the fields, uh, that was not included. Uh, so that had to be added back in, had to be negotiated. We did negotiate on the price of that, bringing that down a little bit, um, so that, that would actually worked out to be nine thousand five hundred dollars, uh, had to be added back in after we negotiated some of the other items out. So, we are left with, uh, what is essentially a sixteen thousand dollar, uh, contract, which will get all the final bid documents out so that we can, uh, hopefully, documents out so we can get this project going. It would still be our goal to try and get, uh, this, uh, this work done this season, but we are running out of time, so we've been really pushing very, very hard. I can't, I actually want to thank, um, Missy and Scott and Jeremy, they worked very hard the last, uh, uh, last two or three weeks to try and get this done, and we were literally on the phone, the reason why you didn't get this in your package Thursday night is we were literally back and forth with TPA, making some final, uh, changes that, uh, we need to get kind of, uh, over the, over the wire so we'd have it in time for this meeting, and not have to delay it another couple of weeks, so. Um, so that's where we're at, and certainly, uh, Missy's here if you have any further questions. Uh, again, Scott couldn't make it, but is available by phone if you have something I can't answer relative to the engineering pieces.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Martin?
Um, Mr. Condon, what, from the Park and Rec meeting last Monday-
Yes.
-there was, um, concern expressed that the irrigation, um, was not included in this, and it, it was unofficially expressed by the park supervisor that that was, um, his term, not mine, penny wise and pound foolish, to not put irrigation systems and at least the piping and stuff for this field.
Right, so that is one of the other issues that we did, uh, have extensive discussions on. So, the irrigation was never included in this project, uh, from the very beginning. Uh, it was something that was felt could be handled as a phase two, if necessary, um, effort you can, uh, my understanding is you, it, there isn't a whole lot of, um, it's not like you'd have to rip up a field to put an irrigation system in, it's a very sh- very, you know, small, uh, kind of shallow, a relatively shallow piece that they can easily, you know, take the, the, the piece of dirt out, put the piping in, put that right over it again, never, you know, they, they do it all the time. Um, there is the issue of bringing water that far into that last field, um, you know, Missy can probably speak to this in more detail than I can. Um, we, we have it on the radar for a future project, but that would add not just cost, but significant delays. I mean, if we were to spec that at this point in time, we're just, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be ready to go. Um, and we do have other alternatives. There is this concept of the infamous water wheel, um, which is basically a manual way to bring water to those fields, which can be utilized. Uh, we do it currently for some of the other fields. So, I think we need to, you know, evaluate that, uh, but, you know, it, it was never, it was never part of this project to begin with.
I understand that. Is, is there any concern that in moving away from the irrigation system or not addressing it now, that has happened so much in Tacoma, it'll never happen? And they will continue to have to carry water to that spot?
Well, I would, I would think with, you know, the leadership in the Parks and Rec Commission and the Parks and Rec Department and our capital projects, uh, you know, our, our programming and our budget process, we have enough people involved, but we certainly, uh, I think we'd be foolish to have it drop off our radar.
So, you, you would support that, then?
I would certainly support continuing to have it on the radar and be evaluated and determine if it's, uh, something that we want to endeavor to, uh, approach as a, as a, there, there, you know, there is a, there is a master plan for the park that probably needs to be, uh, reevaluated at this point. There's a lot of part, pieces of this project that are not included, such as, uh, uh, an adjacent parking area to where this, uh, where these fields will be going, going into. That is something that, there is a plan, uh, there's a, a nearby, uh, street that could have access brought to there and parking, and that is something that was part of that master plan, and that's another piece that should be looked at in concert, um, with the bigger picture. Um, but again, not something that was in the current project, uh, that was ever before, uh, in terms of the this days of the, of the effort. Um, so, we, if you want to-
And-
No? Good? Did I miss anything?
No, you got it all, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Yeah, well, I did, but I'm not sure it's really pertinent to the, to the document. Um, there was also discussion in, um, as we stood around the parking lot, that the, the project, the supervisor indicated could be three years before that field would be usable. Is that correct, Missy?
Yeah, I have to be, because he has a knowledge of field start to finish, so that was in the view.
I, I don't know, three years would probably be the, a very, I think it'd be probably the, the longest range of that. Um, there's definitely, I mean, I think it was, to my knowledge, it was well known that there's a resting period where you've got to allow the fields to grow and, and rest. How many seasons that, whether that's two or three, I think, um, probably is dependent upon how, how the, it actually progresses and probably inspecting it to see how it's done, but-
Certainly that kind of timeline would speak to the urgency of-
Which is why, right, I think if we can get it seeded this season, that obviously is significant.
I can, I can speak to a lot of these issues because I sat on Parks and Rec when, that's how long ago it was, when this project was first contemplated and everything Mr. Kellogg said is accurate. This, this was a, in my personal opinion, was a Band-Aid attempt to alleviate field space. As Mr. Kellogg said, there's a master plan. That master plan always contemplating, contemplated access through what's now known as Park View Lane. There's an east, there's an east end at the end of Park View Lane. There's a gate at the end of Park View Lane. This field would be accessible through Park View Lane. I don't know if there's city water on Park View Lane, but.
There is.
There's city water on Park View Lane. The commission chose at that time, the Parks and Rec director thought that this was the path of least resistance, to put it nicely, to get a field in and install as soon as reasonably possible to alleviate other field space, such as Great Hollow, which is, you know, there's three softball fields at Great Hollow that are being, that can never be used because it's used for lacrosse and soccer. So, it really makes no sense to even have dirt on those fields at Great Hollow for any purpose. That was one of the concerns and amongst others, to get more field space in town. And it's unfortunate this project's taken this long because that was not the vision of Parks and Rec. In fact, we had contemplated, I mean, in order to get to these fields, you're going to park in the overflow lot. I don't know the exact distance.
It's pretty far.
But that's a, that's a long hike to get from there, all the way to that field. And, and I thought personally that was ridiculous. I think I recall Mr. Cooper coming to us and say, as court was, if you build it, they will come or they will use it. I remember that comment when I was on council. So, you know, I, I really think that this potentially should have been thought out a lot better. I think if they had known three years were going to go by before its approval, it should have been looked at again. And this is an unfortunate, this is unfortunately a project that lost its way through, you know, prior administration and years. And, you know, I think at this point, the Parks and Rec is pushing hard to see this project through. It's also fairly disingenuous to the public because we voted on this bonding three plus years ago. And so, there's a lot of questions as to why this hasn't happened. But I think Mr. Kellogg's taken the right approach. Irrigation was never part of this project. And if that is a concern now, frankly speaking, if irrigation is a concern for Parks and Recreation now, then I would strongly urge them to reconsider this entire field project. As someone who has children who would benefit from this project and certainly think it's a great idea, I, I do think it's not the best approach to improving Wolf Park. Personally, I don't think it's the best approach. I think, you know, it, it should have been looked at to go through Park View to really try to, if you're going to put a field that far, they should, they should be strongly looking at better access to that field. And, and so, unfortunately, we are where we are. And at this point, I think it's, let's, let's move forward. But I would consider and urge Parks and Recreation and council to strongly review the master plan and try to figure out a way to incorporate these fields into better future improvements at Wolf Park that were originally intended. Does that agree?
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Kellogg, would you recommend to Parks and Rec? Like, I feel like we rush things through because it was approved three years ago, and why haven't we done it? But if it's the wrong thing to do, why just to rush it through and to spend the money? If it's not the right thing, if it's not the right plan, what, would we suggest to really work on it and make it right? Is that something that we can do even though the money was approved?
I don't know necessarily if this is necessarily wrong. It's perhaps just not being approached in a single comprehensive project. It's being done in, albeit in stages. And we have, I guess my, my response would be, I 100% appreciate the, the remarks and I don't disagree with them. However, we do have, as, as you said, we have funds that were approved by the taxpayers that we have sitting in accounts. This is a project that's been out there for several years. I've had, I've had regular and ongoing conversations with the Parks and Rec chairman in terms of that this is like their number one project. They want this to proceed forward. They've been, you know, involved in it every, you know, every, every month for how many years now? So, I think it would be at this point to, you know, it, it would certainly require additional funding that is not in place. And, you know, I, I think we would, we would not get anywhere in a very, you know, it would present a considerable delay if we were to stop at this point. So, I think to the earlier comments of the ability to, at, you know, in the, in the near future, be able to alleviate the field comp, you know, the competition for available field space, to at least address that, it would solve that, knowing that. I think we do have additional work that needs to be done relative to the master plans, identifying priorities, funding sources, and then how we approach, you know, putting all the pieces together. So, I think, you know, based on where we are at this point, I, you know, I, I feel we should proceed. I would.
The, the numbers were staggering. I mean, the other benefit was, I mean, we're talking millions compared to this project and that, that was the difference. But my point is, it should be, it shouldn't stop here. We should be looking, immediately looking at how to, as, as Mr. Kellogg said, fit this piece into the larger picture or puzzle. That should happen.
And the other pieces, I mean, I, we have roughly $432,000 sitting in the, in the fund for this project that is going to just sit there and do absolutely nothing unless we proceed forward. And again, we would need potentially more funds if you're gonna, depending on.
And by the way, we were told two growing seasons, so three is the right number because you're building, assuming you're building it year one and then two.
Two growing seasons, yeah.
Mr. Mauer?
In section three, the compensation, item E, reimbursable expenses, it stated as $1,000. Then in our Schedule B with the reimbursables, it provides an estimated expense of $1,000. Under compensation, it says that these are not to exceed fees. However, in Schedule B, it says, "Any additional unforeseen expenses shall be discussed with and authorized by the Town of Monroe prior to proceeding." So, are these fees that are not to be exceeded or are these fees that might be exceeded and have to be discussed with the town?
My understanding, and I'll defer to our town attorney, is that we heavily negotiated a not to exceed because it was originally written as some of an open checkbook, which we were not comfortable with. But, Mr. Hayden, do you want to?
To me, that read as a not to exceed because if it exceeds, we've got to get permission. It's to keep them from, from going over a thousand bucks.
I, I understand the, the section three. What I'm just talking about is then in Schedule B, it seems to go back against the, the not to exceed.
It says, "Any additional unforeseen expenses shall be discussed with and authorized." And if we don't authorize, it's not to exceed. Good?
Exactly. We'd have to, they'd be proposed the cost to us and we'd have to bring them, bring them back here.
And, and, in my opinion, while that does require our authorization, that is not stating that, I, I, personally, I would have a clause, a not to exceed is a not to exceed if any additional cost would be on the part of the providing party. That's, that's a not to exceed agreement, but.
I don't agree.
And then you have the project just shutting down and done.
You're talking about a flat fee. That's not a not to exceed. That's a flat fee. And they're not going to pay for plans and travel expenses.
Okay. I'm not saying it should affect our, whether we, how we vote on this. I'm just saying that in my opinion, it is a discrepancy between the schedule and the contract.
Do we vote it?
Okay. Anybody else?
2020 hindsight's a beautiful thing, and I know you're on the committee and stuff, but I wasn't available around that. If we had a project concept review planned back then, would some of these add-on creep things be avoided?
No.
No?
With this project?
Yeah. Because it looks like the pieces that were missing that should have been thought out.
I would be willing to say the project review concept, project concept review wouldn't have helped this project at all. This project had so many hurdles to get over that were unforeseen at that time, and I don't think it would have helped. I do think it could have, I, I don't think, I know it could have been shoveling through the process a lot better. And that was the problem with the project.
My, my, I, I think we, I want to be real sort of, the project concept review process is not intended to identify every possible obstacle or contingency. I mean, it's expected that things are going to change if the project proceeds. So, I would say for any project, unforeseen things are going to come up. The concept review is just to say, yeah, this is something that we want to give to the town. I, I think there's been a lot of twists and turns as this is going through the process.
Anybody else?
I'll just say, Mr. Kellogg, I commend you for picking this project up and seeing it through the finish line. I've done so many projects, so I appreciate that. And with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And again, that motion carries eight to zero. That is all the business we have this evening. We do have second public participation. Would anybody like to participate in the second public participation? Thank you. All right, seeing none, we will close second public participation. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion by Ms. La Palace is our second. Mr. Rooney, all those in favor? Everybody has to vote to adjourn. Motion carries eight to zero.